Little.
All right, y'all, we're gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Tracy if you'd lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you again for the by the internet, and we pray that you be with through this meeting, but everything to be pleasing of you. Lord, I pray for those who were infected by the coronavirus, we pray that you just be with the families, be with them as they recover. For those that have lost loved ones, Lord, just be with those families. Lord, pray for those that are that are in our military, wherever they're serving throughout the world, we pray that you be with them and their families. Go with us, guide us, lead us in directness in all that we do in Christ's amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tracy. All right, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Hi, folks.
Here.
Tracy McDaniel.
Here.
Tim Spencer.
Here.
Quay Little.
Here.
Iman Dawkins.
Here.
David Smith.
Here.
Charles Mathis.
Here.
All right, uh, get a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move, McDaniel.
Thank you. Got a motion in a second. Um, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Hi, folks.
Yay.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yay.
Tim Spencer.
Yay.
Quay Little.
Yay.
Iman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
All right, need to seek approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, four twenty two thousand twenty. All right.
So move.
We have a motion for Mr. Mathis. Got a second.
Take it.
Second for Mr. Folks, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Hi, folks.
Yay.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yay.
Tim Spencer.
Yay.
Quay Little.
Yay.
Iman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna get approval for the claims in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Do I hear a motion?
So move Dawkins.
Thank you, folks. I have a motion for Mr. Dawkins, a second for Mr. Folks, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Hi, folks.
Yay.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yay.
Tim Spencer.
Yay.
Quay Little.
Yay.
Iman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
All right, next, we have a proclamation for National Peace Officers Memorial Day. I'm gonna ask Mr. Bratton if he would read that to us.
Proclamation is, um, for National Peace Officers Memorial Week, Sunday, May the tenth through Saturday, May the sixteenth, to honor and remember our national law enforcement officers. Whereas there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the law enforcement community in Cherokee County. And wherein, whereas nearly sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately sixteen thousand injuries. And whereas since the first reported death in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, May the tenth through May the sixteenth, twenty twenty is National Police Week, and Wednesday, May the fifteenth, twenty twenty is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enfor- enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas, in accordance with a joint resolution by the United States Congress, which was approved on October the first nineteen sixty-two, the president, by the President of the United States, it, who has authorized and requested to designate May fifteenth of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas Cherokee County joins in the commemoration of all fallen officers and commends all law enforcement officers for their courageous and steadfast service to the nation and to Cherokee County. Now, therefore, Cherokee County Council, in tribute to the memory of our state and our nation's fallen law enforcement officers, and as an expression of public sorrow, do hereby proclaim Friday, May the fifteenth, twenty twenty as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and that is signed by the Chairman, Tim Spencer.
All right, we have a proclamation. Do I hear a motion that we adopted? All right, we have a motion for Mr. McDaniel, a second for Mr. Folks, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Hi, folks.
Yay.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Tim Spencer.
Hey.
Quay Little.
Yeah.
Iman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
All right, next, we have, uh, action item. The Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department in regards to a tax referendum. I guess I turn it over.
You've turned it over to me, Mr. Little. Um, we've got joining us now, um, uh, Donovan Ford, who's the chief of Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, Chief Ford, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can.
All right, yes, sir, just making sure. Uh, Chief Ford contacted me some time back regarding their desire to, um, create a tax district similar to those that are, uh, for most of our volunteer fire department, uh, stations in our county. And, um, this is going to be something that he has to, uh, bring to the county and he has to bring into the town of Blacksburg because his district does encompass the town as well. Um, he is going to share some information with you all tonight. And, um, with that, uh, Chief Ford, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bratton, thank y'all for giving the opportunity for those who haven't introduced themselves to I'm Donovan Ford, the Fire Chief of Blacksburg Fire Department, um, in Blacksburg. I'm gonna show the screen for a moment. Just to get your free attention. Okay, so basically, we come for is it showing up?
Yes. Yeah, I have.
All right, thank you. Um, we're coming to propose, uh, be on the referendum in August. I'm trying to give a small presentation of what we intend to do with our purpose. And basically, with everything we're looking to do with the fire taxes. Now, I'm Donovan Ford, the Fire Chief, been in fire service for over nineteen years. A career firefighter with six, started fire department one or four, five years. Also graduated from the state university, with three to six years. So why did we want to create the fire tax different? Uh, we operate the call every year. Call volume, it improves itself over the four, five years. We went from running five fifty calls a year to running seven, eight hundred calls a year now. Even though with that, just the replacement and the daytime staffing from seven, uh, seven to six P M. Uh, with that being that, you know, back in the just all volunteer fire departments, people could get off at the meal, they could come and run the calls, and now ninety-five percent of my staff or volunteers, they are, you know, they're working nine to five every day to support their family. Um, it also helps to increase the, um, will improve our life safety equipment. What we put in, um, improve the ISO standard, um, status for, for the town and the community and the county portions as well. And to maintain and improve the level of service for ourselves and everybody's safe. This next slide just goes to increase the power volume. Last year, we ran six hundred and forty-one calls. And then it slowed it around three hundred, um, Alpha Bravo and Charlie calls, but we could not maintain and keep that level of service. Um, so we would have been running, running around a thousand calls a year for, um, volunteer department, all volunteer department, makes, you know, us the busiest volunteer department in Cherokee County. So we're trying to, you know, keep up with those numbers and keep up with that high standard and putting a, a right amount of people in every call that we run on. This next slide just shows how much it costs on average to update and put a firefighter from those into a hundred forty to a pay radios cost a five hundred dollar piece. Uh, turn that gear, which is in a square box, this four thousand dollars piece for let's say the turnout gear, air fact running eighty-five hundred dollars, which is in total, it, it averages out around fifteen thousand dollars. My math was incorrect on this part. We just show a mutual aid assistance that we, we've given in two thousand and eighteen. Um, not only do we provide mutual aid assistance for Cherokee County, we do provide it for other counties as well, such as Cleveland, York County, uh, Palm Beach, Union Counties on special operations as well. So I'm just looking, we offered a key over the last evening, uh, we gave receive a grant for over two hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace all our old air packs that were three years out of date, and we just said we blessed to get the grant to replace every aircraft. And a lot of people don't know, it costs a lot for a single aircraft, it's around eighty-five hundred dollars per pack. And we have thirty-five airbags in our station on every truck that we had to replace. It was fortunate enough to get the grants and replace the um, I guess the plans for the twenty, um, twenty twenty expectations, um, creating a fire town tech district, providing twenty-four hour thirty um, safer apparatuses for, for all of the volunteer staff, just like Blacksburg, for the surrounding communities and the lower, the ISO rating from a three. Also, if you, if you, if you purchase, you can replace all the apparatus, um, in our fleet right now. Uh, take the average age for our apparatus, around eighteen years. With our front line apparatus with a ninety-three model truck, and we're running it every day, taking calls. It's got a lot of wear here in Texas this year. So we're getting to the intent and the purpose, um, for a fire tech. And it's basically, we received a lot of cases from the county, which we greatly appreciate. This is forty-six, five hundred or forty-six thousand dollars. And we provide that service for trins nineteen hundreds. And, um, the rate that we was going for was fifteen million, one point five cents for every hundred dollars, uh, within the tax district. This is the, um, question, the public question that would be on the fire department, let me do a fire tax. And the intent, uh, what will be used for, make this an operation and a staffing and, um, support that every day, taking calls, it's got a lot of wear here. Next slide to show, uh, basically, in the circuit, uh, for a fire because basically, we are five, we're honestly greatly appreciate. We provide that service for nineteen hundreds and, um, so we're bringing it for fifteen million, for every hundred dollars. Benefits and advantages of, uh,
Chief Ford, let me stop you for a minute. If anybody's got, Chief Ford, if anybody's got a TV or anything on, I'll ask at y'all, turn that down if possible.
Hey, I can't hear him.
Okay.
There's another feed coming in there from somewhere.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, something in the, in the background, somebody. Um, all right, go ahead, go ahead, Chief Ford.
Okay. Okay, and then going door to door and mailing out brochures and pulling up signs and magazines as well. Next page. We feel about it, we gave out to every citizen in the community, uh, with people stating our intent and our purpose. Um, they gave a little bit of the background. We also created a pamphlet to show and, and show the intent and the purpose of what we provide as fire service protection. Um, it also gave the benefits, it gave the current challenges, as you see on the third slide of, all the way to the right. Um, then it also gave examples of, of, of the whole, well, property value, shouldn't be home value, should be property tax value, or property value. Um, and we also gave essential life safety equipment, what it costs for, say, a set of jaws, as you see in the middle of the screen, rescue equipment. Uh, essential needs that we use every day in our daily operations. And to the right, we have some saved updates. Um, if everything's approved, uh, by council tonight, uh, we will have a, uh, public information meeting on the fourteenth of May, the eleventh of June, and the ninth of July, but we have set as for right now. It will be more to come, I will announce those, uh, once the dates arrive. We need to have more. Then we also did a, did you know, kind of a fact sheet for the, for the citizens as well? Just to give them some general G Wiz information for medical calls or how a fire doubles in every thirty to sixty seconds. Something for them to, to read and, and everything to know about the fire service protection. And, uh, basically, that's the last pamphlet of the brand, uh, of the, of the pamphlet, you know. Breakdown from twenty thousand dollars to eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar property value. And it kind of broken it down and gave them a kind of an accurate, you know, I guess, formula for them to, to go by to see what they will be paying for a year, if everything was to more than that. That's all I have, I will leave it to the, to the council, and I appreciate everybody that worked with us, um, through this, through this time, and I appreciate y'all, everybody for giving me the opportunities to present to y'all today.
Uh, Mr. Little.
Yes, sir.
I have, I have in my possession the, um, petitions that Chief Ford and, um, those folks have, um, gathered and what we are, um, um, bringing before you all tonight is, is his request to, for county council to authorize, um, Amanda Walker and her office to place this on a ballot. Um, in your package, you all have the official question that they all, that, that the Blacksburg, uh, Volunteer Fire Department would like to ask. Um, if you, if you don't mind, Mr. Little, I will go ahead and read that.
Yes, that'd be good.
Okay with you?
Yes, sir.
The question that would be on the ballot is, shall the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department levy a fire tax at a rate of not to exceed fifteen meals of the value of all taxable property within the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire District? This proposal would be used for life safety equipment, maintenance and operations, staffing, personnel, and repairing fire districts' infrastructure to enhance the current level of fire protection services to residents throughout the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department Fire District to avoid a significant reduction in the level of services presently being provided. Um, again, you all have to authorize this to go on a ballot so that the taxpayers can then vote, um, to, um, act accordingly, and then also the town of Blacksburg has to vote. Um, Ms. Walker, is there anything I'm missing on that?
No, sir.
Um, Ms. Walker and her staff will then take the, uh, petitions that had been signed that Chief Ford will turn into her, and they will actually certify those signatures that all of those folks do live in the district, um, before this will be officially placed on the ballot. So I believe what we're looking for tonight, um, is, uh, well, not I believe, what, what the chief is looking for tonight is a vote, uh, whether or not the county council will authorize the placement of this item on a ballot measure. Um, Ms. Walker, when would this be on the ballot?
Your request to, to put it on the ballot on August the eleventh, that will consult, coincide with the town of Blacksburg election and the city of Gaffney elections and school board elections.
Well, y'all, y'all have heard Mr., uh, Chief, uh, Chief Ford's recommendation. Do we have any discussion? Yeah, let me, let me ask the chief. Chief, you said your ISO rating is a three. With the referendum and the upgrades and stuff that you project, what, what potentially could your ISO go to?
Uh, it could lower down to a two.
Okay, and what, either, either chief or, or Bratton, what does fif- fifteen meals, what does that equal to? Per meal?
But how much are you asking, uh, are you anticipating this fifteen meals will generate, Chief Ford?
Um, I've been talking with Mr. Bishop, I think he said it would play to, um, a hundred seventeen thousand.
Did you hear that, Mr. Folks?
Did he say a hundred seventeen thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you. Mr. Ford, did, you, 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 do you have any numbers projected to move the ISO rating to, how much that would save your homeowners?
Uh, no, sir, not at this time, no, sir.
Are you looking to get that?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. We were, we were three points away from getting it last time. It was due to training records and some records that we did not have access to. Uh, once they come back in and do a general assessment, uh, I think in the next year or so, then hopefully everything will lower down to a two, ISO level two.
Is it, do we have any other discussion? What's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate the, uh, work of the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department, have watched it over the years and the dedication of, uh, Chief Don Ford and all his dedicated volunteer firemen. I appreciate all their, their work and, uh, outstanding service in protecting their district. I'd like to make a motion that we allow this to be placed on the ballot, uh, on August eleventh.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll take a second. Smith.
All right, we have a motion, Mr. McDaniel, a second from Mr. Smith. I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Hi, folks.
Yay.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Tim Spencer.
Tim has dropped off of the meeting for some reason, so we'll move forward without him.
Quay Little.
Yeah.
Iman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Mr. Ford, you're on the way. All right, thank you for, thank you for all you do, I appreciate that.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Mr. Bratton, I guess we'll either put it in your hands or Mr. Joe Mathis in regards to the executive session.
Um, Mr. Chairman, we have a, um, Mr. Vice Chairman, we've got an executive session request tonight pursuant to Code Section thirty-four seventy-eight-two to discuss a contractual matter and a legal matter.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Dawkins and a second for Mr. Folks, I'm gonna ask for the roll.
Hi, folks.
Yay.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Tim Spencer. Quay Little.
Yeah.
Iman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna go into executive session for a little bit.
Okay, Mr. Little.
All right, we're gonna return back to session. I'm gonna ask Mr. Mathis to bring this out.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a motion would be in order to return to regular session from executive session. And Madam Parker, she could reflect that no action was taken, executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
So move. Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Mathis and a second for Mr. Dawkins, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Hi, folks.
Yay.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Tim Spencer.
Yeah.
Quay Little.
Yeah.
Iman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
All right, next, we're gonna hear from our attorney, Joe Mathis.
Uh, no report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, next, we are gonna hear from Mr. Bratton, administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, COVID-nineteen updates is, uh, you all know, we had another case reported today. Uh, we're currently at eighteen cases in our county, which, y'all, I'll be honest, is a, is a blessing, uh, compared to what's happening in a lot of counties our size and smaller. Um, I'm not sure what the folks of Cherokee County is doing, but we know we're tough people and obviously so, so we've been fortunate, uh, and blessed. Um, uh, we currently continue to follow all social distancing protocols and so forth. Um, our staff continues to work, uh, very patiently and cooperatively. Um, feel like things are running fairly smoothly with the public right now. We've made it through another uh, month end at the end of April for tax collections, and that's, um, always a tough thing, but it went well. Um, and so we are, um, we're moving forward on that. Um, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, um, and, and to ask actually the council to take our action on, is I've got a request. Um, or, well, we don't have requests, but back in January, I asked you all to approve some courthouse and local and law enforcement center, uh, security upgrades. Those included, uh, access controls on all the doors and then several strategic doors within the building, and also some, um, panic buttons, um, and strategic places throughout both of those buildings. Um, we went out, there's a state contract available, and the company that has that state contract is Allied Universal.